Seven o'clock, we join to pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
To crap tonight.
First item is the approval of the agenda.
I motion we approve the agenda.
Second. Motion second, any discussion? Changes? None. All in favor?
Aye.
Minutes of approval, ten fourteen. Make a motion when you approve the minutes for Monday, October fourteenth.
Second.
Motion to second, any changes, corrections?
Um, I got one.
Okay.
On page one, um, the people present, Dan Ducharme, his position, he was here officially, so his position as first assistant fire chief should be in there. And then on page four, not a big deal, but you know, um, on page four, middle, under fire department bylaws, instead of Mr. Ducharme, it should be Chief Ducharme. Okay? Not a big deal, that's all I can find.
I've got two equally small ones. Uh, first page, uh, under minutes for approval, the first line reads, uh, present or the in the body. The first da, is, uh, should come out of there. See that, Ellen?
Which one, I'm sorry?
This is the, uh, line that starts, Mr. Mark requested in the future, and towards the end, it says da in da, body. And then, on, uh, it's really small, on page four, the first line, per FEMA, uh, FEMA should be all caps. That's it.
Okay, Zach? You all set?
Yep.
Okay. Approval of minutes with corrections, all in favor?
Aye.
Both? Motion carries. Citizen comments? Seeing none, hearing none? Chief, your update?
Okay, so you all got a copy of my report, correct?
Yep.
So if you look at comparison calls, um, really nothing stands out immediately, except for we did more property watches in September than on August, which was, I don't know why, people were on vacations, September, not long, really. Criminal arrests went up by three, nothing really stands out, except more, more, uh, bad check cases we had, which is uttering forged instruments, which should come from retailers. That was up. Traffic violations, um, a little bit under, but about the same. Calls of service to the university, obviously in September, school starts, we had ten. The intoxicated persons and medical emergencies are all kind of related, most of those is what they were for. Suspicious person, circumstances, a couple cases we're working on for them. And then, this is the first month, if you look on the final page that we did with the HCSs.
It's all those.
So I had Justin look up and see what backup was provided by us versus backup provided to us. So the first table, you can see, uh, the amount of backup we provided to agencies. Now, the ones in Benson, Hubbardton, or Polley are all VSP cases. Uh, and Fairhaven's the Fairhaven. And then you look, provided to us, uh, state police provided eleven to us for backup, Fairhaven just three. Any questions on that?
Just one for clarity.
Sure.
Um, when the backup provided by CPD to Castleton, like we're sending out a second car to back up the first car?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Just carries.
Yes, glad you pointed that out, yeah.
Just want to make sure I understand, that's all.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Well, I just wanted to point out, Jim, that you probably appreciated the spelling of spending in the revenue for July.
Certainly do. I really appreciate that.
Okay, I do have a couple things to go over. Uh, or any questions on the, on the statistical report? Okay. So I know the last time you met, you were, you were a little confused on the asset forfeiture that we received, which is like $10,900. Uh, it's a federal program that, uh, we have to be in when we do a case. This is a two-year-old case, that we got all that marijuana and all that money on South Street. There was 113,000 that was taken out of there. Uh, probably, I think, 27 of it was skimmed off the top, left about eighty-something, and out of that eighty, we got 10,900. And that's based on hours, they have a formula, they worked it out. And other agencies involved in that, so that's how that was split up. So the confusion was on where that spending should go. Part of the program, they put, I don't know if any of you have seen this, this is the guideline that we use for anybody that's on the program, and it's very specific on where that spending goes. So what I was going to use it for was update our PCs in our office. And, and it's basically for the law enforcement operations and, uh, equipment. So that's pretty much what that was going to go for. So I'm hoping tonight that you guys can vote on that and clear that up. Any questions on that?
I'll just say my concern again, which was, uh, very simply, if, um, if we could do that legally, or if we had to, because it wasn't tax revenue, if we could do that legally, or if we had to get voter approval before we spent money. And if the answer to that is no, then...
The answer's no.
Okay.
I'm sorry, given the way the question was framed, I'm not sure what that means. Have you found that we can do this legally?
Correct. We called, uh, Secretary of State's office, and because it's under that, um, that program, it's not a, um, anticipated revenue, uh, it's not something that's normally generated that we count every year towards our offsetting with the transportation revenues or that kind of stuff. So if, the, the answer was, it's legal, loans, it's, the protocols of the program are followed.
Okay. Okay, any others?
And I gave Jim the, uh, the actual purchase order that we had last meeting that we held.
This is 6,949?
Correct, yeah.
Want to do that now, or do you want to do it?
You can do it right now.
Let's get it.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion, we approve purchase order number 044117 to competitive computing for, um, I think it's five computers, seven monitors, and five sets of software, for a total of $6,949.18.
Second.
Okay, motion second. What's the number, you got the number on that, Dick? Did you read that?
The purchase order number, yes, I did.
Okay, good. Any other questions, Joe? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I just got two more things. Uh, remember, a while back, I talked about, uh, the mediations I was setting up with some of the residents for some issues that they kept lingering and putting all their resources. Well, three weeks ago, I did the one on Pine Street. Went very well, very informal, um, I did some research on how to do it, because it's not legally binding, it's just something that you can develop within a department. So I had a agreement set up, they signed it, they came, worked it out, just like a normal mediation, what we talked about, and then, um, I'll do a follow-through in two months. The other mediation I'd set up for next week is for our Blissville, uh, the barking dog issues. That's been kind of, kind of going on, and I tried to actually get it in September, but I got behind, so I contacted both parties, and they're willing to me, uh, next Tuesday.
Oh, good.
We'll see how that goes.
Good.
And one of the reasons why I was looking into, because it's, it's taken so much of our resources, uh, and they're not criminal in nature, and it really comes down to communication between them, and really understanding and a respect, so that's kind of how I'm going at it, so.
And who's doing the mediation?
You are.
Yeah.
Okay. Any questions on that?
Anything else, Chief?
No, that's it.
Or numbers? Okay.
Can I ask one question?
Sure.
Because Nancy's not here. Um, have you spoken to Nancy Trudeau about traffic control plan for the seventh of December?
Yeah, she, I had emailed her, she's got my email, and I told her to contact me and we can move it.
Okay, thanks, Chief.
Appreciate it.
Next was the tax map proposal, Mary Jo, who's not here yet. Dogs in cemetery, John Burke will address that. Captain Capel, no, we did. Um, want to go down to the transfer station and come back?
Yeah, map, dog, some, signing of the capital equipment, no, for the truck. That was the next one on the agenda.
I'll do that one, though. Okay.
We can do that?
Oh, that's the one we approved last meeting?
Yeah.
We're going to have to sign the paperwork.
Yeah, the, the resume should be over there for that. So basically, uh, through our bank, uh, People's Bank, uh, People's United Bank, um, it's a 2.5% interest rate, annual interest rate, um, annual principal payments of $38,140. And the installments aren't due until, uh, 2020. What I've proposed with, talk with Melanie, is we have, we've been budgeting, because we have it, I want to make the initial payment now to reduce the amount of interest that we have over, over that year, um, and we'll pay it off early anyway that way. And we already have the money, so it's, we could pay for it outright, but if we...
We want the truck?
Yeah. But we have, we could pay for the, the truck, uh, and the Viking package outright, but it starts depleting any resource we have in case something catastrophic happens, like the damn Creator engine blows again, or that kind of stuff, so. Um, but if we pay upfront, um, we'll reduce the amount of interest we're paying, we'll actually pay it off early. And we have no penalties for paying it off early, we have to bank that. Um, so, um, the truck is actually being brought by Chief's son-in-law from Goss Dodge to Viking with the package, flower package we put on it. They're, they're bringing it, so we don't have to, otherwise, we have to go get it and bring it there. They agree that they'll do it for us.
That's the 5,500, right?
Correct.
What's the status of the big truck?
Uh, still haven't got a status on it, it's built, one, two, three, four, five. We'll have a date of when, when they're going to think they're going to deliver it.
Can you tell us what the total amount of the purchase and the total amount of the interest is?
Total amount?
You have that there, Mike?
Yes, the total amount of the purchase is...
For the truck?
Not just Goss, it's 114,000, or has read it? I just know it read it.
Yeah, but how much is interest, and how much is for the actual purchase of the truck?
Uh, the note, I didn't know, the note, it was 114,420. And the amortization schedule under 2.5% interest rate is $38,140 a year. We figured it out before on the, the lease, the own versus, uh, the purchase outright, and what we'd saved, and, but I know that the 5.4% interest rate, or 5.04% interest rate that Dodge was going to charge us, um, that's almost, that's double what we're getting on our right here, so. Do you want me to get that number for you?
No, that's okay, but... No, we're, we're far enough along, so, unless someone else has concerns over it. My only concern would just for information purposes, that's all.
If you would, Chairman, I will get that information for you, provide it to you as well.
That'd be great.
Thanks.
Since you offered. Yes, Melanie?
Mr. Chairman, if I could just make a comment that the, the, if we make our first payment upfront, rather than waiting until a year from now, it will change the amount of interest on that, the amount borrowed, so, um, it'll be less.
Yeah, I understand that.
Okay.
Yeah, Mike mentioned that.
That's why the numbers, the numbers would be higher.
I guess what my question was, is how much are we actually paying for the truck, and how much are we paying in interest? That was my question. Now, you get...
We, we have that breakdown, I have it.
Yeah, okay.
I thought I gave it to last meeting, but it was under, uh, the 5.4%.
I'm surprised this doesn't, this doesn't. I looked through it a couple of times, and I didn't find it in there, I thought probably it would be there. But, okay, any, uh, motion, gentlemen?
Didn't we already approve that last meeting?
Yeah, we got to sign it.
Approve the payment.
Approve the payment.
Make a motion that we sign the, uh, lease agreement with, which bank is it again?
People's United Bank?
People's United.
Lease agreement with People's United Bank for the purchase of the Dodge 5,500 pickup.
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Need to correct, it was the pile truck, it's not the pickup.
Now, we have to sign this in... Come with a truth and lending disclosure.
Two places, guys.
Because... Last I checked, we got to have that somewhere.
For anything?
The, the treasury, oh, I can ask the treasury, but I like to be honest.
Because that'll show you how much you're financing, how much.
No, I already have that, I had it with last meeting. Please open that, how much we, the difference. 5.04%, or 5%?
Okay, back to, uh, Mary Jo, and tax map. We heard the proposal last time, I think the board members had a couple of questions, one of which was, um, if we were to go with Russell Graphics, does, will that in any way, uh, limit our ability on money for a town right, wide reassessment? Should that ever be necessary in the future? And then maybe there were a couple of other questions, I'm not sure.
No, well, the, the short answer's no. So each year, the town gets, um, a sum of money from the state. It's a per parcel amount, I think it's about eight dollars. That goes into a reappraisal fund, so that you can pay for it when it comes time. Castleton did reappraisal in 2015, um, hopefully won't have to do one for a few more years. So, and there is money in the account now, um, so what I was looking to do is perhaps, um, pay with, for that one-time fee of switching over from that account. It's about $8,900, and then the, um, the yearly, um, update would come out of my budget, which is a little more than we paid in the past, but, um, I'll see that it's, you know, available in my budget. I don't spend a lot of excess funding, so.
Okay.
I don't see that being a problem.
Any questions on that part of it? None? Okay. Other questions dealing with the tax map proposal? Joe?
Yeah, uh, Mary Jo, I had a couple of questions, uh, and I appreciate your, the detail you provided, and it sounds like you've got a distinct preference for the Russell Graphics, uh, approach. Who uses these different approaches? Russell Graphics, CII Technologies, et cetera?
Well, there's, there's several, um, people that does, they do mapping, um, for, for towns. So, some towns use one vendor, or some towns use a different vendor. Um, I have worked with Russell Graphics through Polley for a number of years. I did, I find their, um, I find the maps a little user-friendly, more user-friendly. Um, they're updated each year with the names, so every time you get, you know, you get a parcel transfer, it's got the current name, it's got the full parcel ID number on it. Um, he, he gives it so that you can reference it by parcel number or by name, uh, alphabetically. And he's, he makes himself very available if there, an issue comes up, and I have a question, or I need a recalculation, or I need him to go back and look. And there's, there's a few parcels like that in every town, but, and there's certainly a few here, too. So I anticipate, um, being able to get some help with that. But he, he's readily available, um, usually when I call, um, so.
I, I guess the point of my question is that, um, switching from one company to another is expensive.
Right.
And if there's any likelihood that in the near-term future, we might make another change, we might be incurring a similar, you know, $9,000 translation expense.
Right.
I noticed that the CII Technologies is urging the use of the Axis GIS technology.
Right.
I mean, I don't know what that is, but I've heard of it. I'm assuming that it's a more, uh, generic, uh, approach that, that maybe a number of different mapping companies might be using.
Well, it's, um, I don't know if it's a generic approach, but it's, it, all the mapping companies have, um, the capability to use deep GIS, um, and there's a lot of, um, there's a lot of perks with different sys, you know, however you want, it just depends how much money you want to spend. You know, if you want a map that you can click on, and all that parcel identification, all that information of that parcel comes up, you can do that. You can do it, you can have all your sewer lines, so you click on something, all your, your whole sewer line map comes up. You know, so it depends how sophisticated, and it also, all that costs money. It's everything, everything extra is going to cost more money, so.
I think they call layers.
And layers, yeah, yeah. And you can get some layers through the, um, A and R, um, what's it called? Atlas. You can, you can get some layers, and you can get some, and the layers are not, what I'm finding is they're doing this big project, and the layers are not terribly accurate. Things are not kind of lined up. To me, it looks like they're not both, um, I don't, I don't know how to describe it, but your, your map on the ground is not necessarily lined up with your parcel lines. You know, one's larger than another, so it's not exactly, so somebody's house might look at, look like it's on the neighbor's land from it, you know? We haven't quite gotten that down yet, so. It's an evolving technology, you know? They're using drones in some places to do all the mapping technology. So, anyway, it's, it's really a preference, I suppose.
Just, uh, another question or two about, uh, the company that, Russell Graphics, have they been around for a long time?
Yeah. Yeah, they do several of the towns in the Rutland, Rutland, Bennington County. I don't know, he's probably all over the state, I don't know. They both are.
Okay, Jo, thank you.
Just a question, if we switch from CII Technologies to Russell Graphics, it's going to make your job more efficient, is that, do you like putting it?
Well, I think it's going to make the mapping user, user-friendly, more user-friendly to me, to Jonas, and I think to the general public. Um, and maybe, you know, maybe it's just because that's what I'm used to, but I, um, I can really rely on the mappings that I get from him. That, that's my experience. Whereas, and I don't, for whatever reason, the maps here are, seem a little more unnecessarily complicated. And, um, so.
I can say, I, I heard that from our previous assessor, and I got here, is that switch the mapping programs, it's not, it's hard to use, and, and that having the names on, on the maps is, um, so much more, uh, efficient, I guess, when we're doing research.
Well, it, it's easier to just tie it together. I mean, I found a parcel today that had some random parcel number that didn't match the map, and it took me an hour to figure out what the deal was with it, which we did, but, um...
And this would help eliminate those.
I, I think it would, I think it would.
Anything else, Dave?
Not at this point.
No? Zach? No? I'm, I'm all set. Someone wish to make a motion? What would the total amount be?
So, um, quote I got was $8,900 to, to switch the maps over, and the, um, the maintenance fee, the yearly fee is 3,500.
So it's 89 and 35.
And we're going to do all of that in the first year?
Hopefully, yeah.
The time?
Yeah, if I can get on his schedule.
Okay. They just read here that you could break down that 8,900 over two fiscal years preferred. How does that work?
Well, he just bill us half of one year and half the next year.
Okay.
How long do you think this process would take?
To switch them over?
Yeah.
I'm hoping by spring. I'm hoping we'll have new maps by spring. So, if I can get, if I can get on his schedule now, because over the winter, I think, is the time to...
Before the...
Because come, come springtime, they're updating everything, you know?
So it's months, not years.
What's that?
It's months, not years.
That's my impression, yeah, yeah.
Okay, any other questions? Is there a motion?
I would move that we approve the, uh, proposal from Russell Graphics for a one-time conversion, um, fee of $8,900, and an annual parcel map update cost of 3,500.
Second.
Is that, just for clarification, is that going to be in one year or in two years?
I believe those are both in one year.
Okay. Is that correct, Mary Jo?
That the $3,500 charge will be due within this fiscal year?
Yeah, yeah, that'll be for the springtime of the year.
And forgive me if I use the wrong term, but if it's coming from a reserve account for the, uh, one-time fee, I don't think it's going to make a lot of difference whether it's one or two fiscal years.
It'd be better, can you speak up a little more, Dick?
What I said was, if it's, uh, coming out of, and I may use the wrong term, but a reserve account, for lack of a better term, then, uh, whether it's one or two, spread over one or two years, really doesn't make much difference, because the funds are already in the bank.
So it's actually coming from, how much do we have budgeted?
Budgeted?
Yeah.
For the one-time fee?
Yeah.
Well, it's, whatever's in the budget, it would be, is, do you have any idea what's in that account? I think you indicated that it was maybe a hundred thousand dollars, I think.
Well, in terms of the one-time fee, that's, that's the...
That's your operating budget.
Yeah, that's not your operating budget.
Right.
What have you budget, what's in your operating budget for mapping?
My operating budget, I've got 2,000, but I think there's enough money that I can cover the extra out of my budget. I don't have a problem looking at that.
Any other discussion? Well, just to comment, that if I read this correctly, the, uh, 2,000 charge from, uh, the existing vendor was only for nine months of the year. Is that January 1st to...
No, I, I believe that's what he has charged for the yearly update.
Right. But I, I don't think it was for a full year, was it?
I think it is for a full year. I could go back and look at that, though, I'm not, though.
January 19th, I think.
January...
19th.
Well, right, um, this year, this year what happened, so I'm assuming that his fee is $2,000 for the yearly update, but we were in that GIS, um, program, and so he did some of the work up through December to get through phase two of that, and then the $2,000 was billed, I, I assume that's the yearly fee, so this is my first year. I'd have to go back and look if he charged you more in the past, but I seem to remember, my first year here, it was 2,000 as well.
Mike, another question.
I, I'd have to clarify that.
Okay, hold on, hold on. Go ahead, Mary Jo.
I, I just have to clarify that.
Okay.
Now that you bring that.
Go ahead, Mike.
So if we're going to convert, and once it's converted, that, that should be the fee, so the annual maintenance fee, would that be the following year? Because there's no maintenance part of it, if he's building the maps and they're done at the, at the begin, at the end of that pro, that time.
Well...
We can work on that tomorrow, but I, I just, I don't know if they're going to, why they build something that's brand-new, and then say, I need $3,500 to update it, because it's just been updated.
Right, if I, I, I can give him as much of the, uh, information that I have moving forward.
I can work on it.
I, I can, I can confirm that with Dean.
It may not cost 3,500 the first year.
Okay, makes sense. Just, um, I've got my question, now, Jim.
Is that plural?
Possible. Depends on the answer to the first one. Other, when I'm looking at the, um, the latest financial statement, it's dated, uh, it's for the month ending 8/31/19, and other purchase services for the current fiscal year is probably where that mapping charge would go in the, uh, in the tax listing budget, correct? correct?
That would be part of the purchase services.
That's on page five, by the way, of sixteen.
Patriot, I think some of their fees are purchases.
It could be other things in there, but I think it would come from that.
My guess is that's where it would come from.
So, I'm just curious where, you know, we've actually spent thirty-four hundred so far this year and where that went. Can see around one or two.
Be thirty-five hundred since July one?
Correct.
Okay, the opposite of four, okay.
Mr. Chairman, mapping is coming out of dash sixty, professional services.
And what's the amount, amount? Oh, okay.
Budgeted two thousand.
That's it, yeah, that's.
And it says for the CIA tax maps. But I think the reduction was also because it was intended possibly at the time the budget was built to take money out of the reserve to maintain the grant list, because this could certainly come under that peruse. It's from the budget worksheets, John.
Understand?
I do, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, call a motion, not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, opposed, motion passes. Thank you, Mary Jo.
Okay, thank you.
Onto cemetery commissioners. Mr. Burke.
Thank you for inserting me in the agenda this evening, and, and I'm here because we have had a rule in the cemetery, a duly, a duly adopted rule in the cemetery, no dogs. And that's worked out, there was some discussion at the time, but we've had it for ten years, and the idea being that some people that frequent the cemetery to visit their loved ones are afraid of dogs, others get irritated with the fact that dogs, well, dogs are dogs and they do what they do when they're running around in a cemetery. And so, that was the rule and still is the rule. We, this year started to realize, it actually began last year, that there were several people that were ignoring it. When you spoke to them, they basically indicated, what are you going to do about it? And the answer was, we couldn't do much, because that was our rule, but as far as getting it enforced, there was no, and no pun intended, because we're dealing with dogs, no teeth in it. So, after substantial discussion at a couple of meetings, there was a motion made by the trust, by one of the trustees, that we ask the selectmen to modify the animal control ordinance, I believe you have a copy in front of you in your pocket, which now ends at Cemetery Road and runs east from there, to amend that ordinance to include the cemetery, the Hillside Cemetery property, the property of the Castle and Cemetery Association in its entirety, so that, in fact, we would have to change our signage to say, no dogs except on a leash, and there'd be the ability to enforce it, because it would be a violation of your ordinance. Gives us a chance to say to those who are going to ignore what we've asked them to do, and gives us a chance to be able to enforce it and have some ability to enforce it. So, after a unanimous vote in our, can't remember if it was actually just before Labor Day or just after Labor Day, in the unanimous vote of the trustees, they authorized me to come in front of the board and, and make that request. And so, I'm making it.
Can you find that two-point-one-zero animal control area? Everybody find it?
That's the section you're talking about, right, John?
Yes, and, and it runs, right now, the, the boundaries of that village district use Cemetery Road as the boundary line and then running east from there, running up to Brown Road and then east. We'd ask that you include the, the Castle and Cemetery Association-owned property, Hillside Cemetery, in that, extend it, in other words, one property to the west, so that we would have the ability to be included in that and eliminate dogs except on leashes.
If I read this correctly, John, it's not really saying the entire village, it's just saying these roads. Am I correct when I read this ordinance?
Yeah, I read that, yeah.
So, it's not, not saying the entire village, they need to be on a leash, it's just.
No, it just gives, it just gives a definition of an area, but, but the area is bounded on the west by Cemetery Road.
Yeah.
So, we're asking that you include the cemetery property in that district.
Would you be willing to write the language?
Would I be willing to write the language?
To change this ordinance?
Sure.
Any other questions? Is there a motion?
Well, I think what we need to do actually is have, if John is willing, is graciously agreed to change the language, if he would take a copy of this and change it to what he feels would suit the cemetery's needs, and then we could.
Could I offer a, a simple suggestion, and maybe this is inadequate, but in that area, two-point-one-zero, animal control area shall mean Hillside Cemetery and the following public roads.
And maybe this.
That's all I'm going to do.
That's all there is, yeah.
Joe Mark. Which is why I, yeah, yeah.
Really pretty simple, yeah. Would you care to make a motion to that, effect Joe?
I would move that we insert the phrase, Hillside Cemetery, after the phrase, animal control area shall mean, I suppose that should be Hillside Cemetery and the following public roads.
I will second that.
Any further discussion? All of the favor?
Aye.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, folks.
John, thank you.
You're paying me for that motion?
Of course.
So, what's this?
This is James.
You might, you might do some, you might.
James may be buying a Castleton Life Club scholarship ticket from me, is what this is, and all the rest of you are welcome to do that. You know where I live.
Okay. Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Since we opened this ordinance or policy, can I ask a question? On, on the last page, Article six, six-point-two, an owner found in violation of this ordinance may be fined not more than five hundred dollars in accordance with the following schedule of fines. I noticed that one of the schedules, one of the fines on the schedule is five hundred dollars. Does that suggest that when you've been fined for the first offense, the second offense, you're already at four hundred fifty dollars? You can not be fined for the four hundred fifty-dollar third offense and the five hundred subsequent offense? I mean, if I were a citizen who's being hit with these fines, I'd say, wait a second, it says right here, not more than five hundred dollars. I, I think that, I, I can't imagine that the intent was not to allow each of those fines to be added to the others, so I don't understand why we say not more than five hundred dollars there.
I see what you're saying, Joe.
I think you should say per, per, after that.
Yeah.
Well, after, after the, the four fifty, the subsequent offenses are five hundred, and there's no waiver, so you're not paying the minimum, the thirty-five or the seventy, so you can't, there is no minimal wa, or there's no waiver, it's five hundred dollars. So, after you get your third offense, subsequent offenses after that are five hundred dollars, and it's always going to be five hundred dollars, there's no waiver, where the first one's for, if you pay four fifty, the waiver's one oh five, so it can be pled down to get the waiver fee.
Well, that, that's a, the whole pleading issue is a separate matter, but I, I was inclined with Zach to agree that it should say, per offense.
Offense occurrence, whatever.
Not more than five hundred dollars per offense.
Per offense.
Because one could argue that, look, I already gave the one fifty plus the three hundred for the first offenses, and their per offense will only be.
How about if I make a motion that we add the words, per offense, after five hundred dollars in the first line of section, Article six-point-two?
Second that?
That seemed to cover this. Isn't that in statute somewhere, what the violation is?
You want to identify yourself, sir?
Oh, aye, I'm in favor with the Rutland Regional Planning Commission. I think that the wording for how you can pay yourself on a violation is in statute, and I'm not sure what that is. I know what it is for Chapter one seventeen, which is like planning and zoning stuff, but for a town ordinance, I'm not sure what that is, but, like you were saying, it's like per, each day is a separate offense, but the wording you're searching for is in statute somewhere.
It references statute on the front page, twenty-four B S A.
So, was there any harm in putting those words in there?
Well, just to make sure it jives with what the statute says.
That's a force of protection.
Yeah, just make sure that it's in the statute.
So, should we table this until?
Think it better, yeah.
Mike's attention, it's about the statute.
Like, did it give any more after Title twenty-four?
Section nineteen seventy-four A and nineteen seventy-seven.
Okay.
I talked about the violation of the ordinance as a matter of law, any enforcement of it?
Yeah.
Okay, so, is our motion stable?
So moved.
Second. All of the favor?
Aye.
Tabled. Okay. Transfer station containers, Mike?
Gentlemen, you have a packet of quotes in there from Northeast Industrial, Custom Container Solutions, and Thompson Fabrication. The, the brief backstory is, we have two bins up at the transfer station that were given to us under a grant from the Rutland County Solid Waste District. They have cens, crumble, they're, they're falling apart to a point now where when they try to load them, they're scrapping stuff, because it's, I'm afraid it's going to fall apart on the road, is what I'm really worried about. And this is the stuff for newspaper, magazines, junk mail, that stuff. There is no grant available to replace those. I've already tried through Rutland County Solid Waste, so the only way we're going to replace it is to buy it. And we, we can turn in the ones that we have now for scrap metal and try to recover some of the, the costs, but the new bins, what I found out, sorting the paper, the junk mail from the magazines, from the newspaper, doesn't net us any difference in commodity values. So, we're just going to have one bin, we're going to, it's still compartmentalized, but we don't have to sort it out by types. So, that will be better for us, and we don't have to wait till some, one's, right now, one's not full and the other one's full, we don't haul it sometimes, we wait, try to get it full, but, anyway, that will be alleviated by purchasing the new bin. We, we definitely need it, so I would make a recommendation that we purchase the bin from Northeast Industrial for six thousand six hundred twenty dollars. Quote's been verified as accurate, and that is the lower.
Is the quality of the bins the same?
Yeah, I mean, by what we're reading, they're all the same thickness and stuff.
Okay.
What's the expected lifespan of one of these?
I don't really know. The ones that we have are, are, I don't know how old they are, but they're old. If we take care of them and we keep them off the, you know, out of the mud and stuff, they'll last longer. The proposal that I will come to the board with in the spring will, will address all that, so we, the ground will be such that it's conducive to longer lifespan of what we're, we have it currently at the transfer station and any future purchases that we, we make.
Any other questions for Mike?
No.
Motion?
I'll make the motion, we approve quote number three-seven-five-eight to Northeast Industrial in the amount of six thousand six hundred and twenty dollars. Second.
Okay, any other discussion? Not, all of the favor?
Aye. Thank you.
You're up, Dave, Mike.
If you have any questions of anything at this point, but I'll go to number, first page at the bottom for flow bridge. So, right now, the guardrails are not in, and Jethro, I spoke to him again today, the owner of Tikonic Excavation, this stuff will be in, his plan was to do it on November the fourth. But I also had, we, we spoke last meeting about putting smaller stone to chink in with the larger stone that he's already put up there. I talked to him today, he still thought he was doing the job, and, and I said, I, no, I don't want you to do the job. I want you to provide me the estimate of what you thought it was going to take for materials, and I'll have the highway crew do the work. And free him up to get on Belgo Road, which he won that, you awarded that bid to him, so he can start that project. So, that's my recommendation, is he just doesn't have, he didn't give me the, the amount of materials needed, so I can't give you the, the figure yet. I don't really want to wait till the next meeting, because it's after the fourth, so I don't know how to go about this as far as giving you enough figure to approve. I don't know if you, if we, if you approve the, the purchase of the stone, the town will be doing it, it would be for Jethro, so maybe just under our, just under our budget. So, we need, we need approval to go out, I guess, for him to, to do the job, we're going to be doing it, so maybe it's a moot point, but I just want to at least let you know that I've taken it off his plate, the town will do the work, but it's going to be expensive for this stone, we're probably talking around nine grand.
How much? How much stone are we talking, for many yards?
He, he told me, he was like, I forgot, I don't want to quote it, because I'm going to misquote it. If you, if you really need to know, hurry, I can get that to you tomorrow, but I'm waiting for the estimate from him, but I want the estimate to come from him as a contractor, because he's probably really done his, his due diligence on that, but we would have to purchase the stone from, out of our operating budget to complete the job. And, and on another note, the paving up there, I take that, I took that off his plate as well. It's minimal damage that was done to the pavement, I mean, really minimal damage, but we can address that in our paving bid for the spring when we go through it. We're not, we haven't paid him, so it's not like we paid him, he's not doing the work. It's just taking it off his plate, and we'll just worry about it with our spring, when we bid our paving out for next year. I'm not sure if you have any questions.
Any questions for Mike? Any others? Motion?
I don't think we have.
Yeah, I don't.
We've got to authorize you to, we have to authorize you to.
Well, it's going to be over my spending limit, because it's going to be, it's going to be eleven hundred, I am, somewhere in that area, but I, I can't give you a definitive answer on how much it is at this point.
To authorize you to.
Use our operating budget to.
Purchase a stone from the highway operating budget? Is that reasonable?
Why, how about he calls us, pulls the board?
Pardon?
How about he calls us and pulls the board?
Fine.
After he tells us, after he figures out how much it's going to be.
Right.
And then he can give us our recommendation, but we pull it from the.
Okay, other comments?
Operating budget.
Y'all said.
Yeah.
The, we could have a conversation of pulling the board. I'd be more comfortable with authorizing, I mean, first of all, you think this needs to be done before our next regular scheduled meeting?
Yes, because the, because the guardrails have to go in, and once the guardrails are in, we're not going to be able to get the excavator in there to.
I understand, but there, we want the guardrails in, he's going to put them in on the fourth, but beyond that, he's just giving you an estimate of the amount of stone that you need to buy.
Of each type, there's two different types.
You don't need to buy the stone before our next meeting.
Well, it gets put in before.
I thought he wasn't putting it in.
He's not, we're going to, but I also have the weather that's, I'm trying to beat the weather to get the stuff done before we have.
And you have to put the stone in before the guardrails go in?
Yes.
Okay.
You have to buy the stone, obviously.
And then be able to have the stone on site with the guardrails down, so the excavator can get in there to maneuver, because it's not long enough to reach.
Well, I, I guess I would move that we authorize the manager to spend an amount for this stone that exceeds your spending limit, but not to exceed ten thousand dollars.
That's fine.
Second. Good. You second that?
Yep.
Any other discussion? All of the favor?
Aye.
Anything else, Mike? Orkin.
Yeah, Orkin. So, I know that Chris came and saw you, Jim, as a health officer. The, the problem that we're having up there with the, the rodents isn't getting better. Chris is saying it's, it's getting worse. So, we hired an exterminator-type person to go up there, and they're at the point now where they're up there with, with pellet guns shooting them. It's the poison, anything. It's the poison, anything they've used so far is really not slowing them down. If you want to take a visit up there, I'd certainly encourage that because they're digging holes everywhere, and all that money that got spent on that block wall, they're tearing it up. And so Jim, or me Jim, sorry about that. Chris has spoken to me about it, and I think it's time to go to a different, more, you know, professional approach to this with Orkin and see what they can do, at least have a conversation with them, but what they can do differently that's being done now. But whatever's, whatever we're doing, it's not working. And I think it's more of a health issue because they're everywhere up there.
I seem to recall, Mike, that you brought us a proposal from East Orkin, maybe a couple of vendors. I guess here we are again with the issue of timing. Is there, can we wait till the next meeting to review that proposal?
Yes.
Can you agree?
I think it might be a good idea to have Mike have Orkin revisit the issue though, only because, you know, the proposal they gave us six months ago may or may not still be appropriate.
And I know as I said, you want to put it back up to bid, or just hire Orkin, so.
Or at least get us to get a proposal from them.
Yeah. Or they do a site visit?
Yeah.
Undoubtedly, conditions have changed in the last six months, either for the better or for the worse, or.
I'll get Orkin in there and take a look at it, and if you want to go up the bid, then I'll need to get that work, start working on that to get solicit three bids again, but we solicited them last time, we got three.
I'm not necessarily saying we need to get three bids, but we should review the three proposals we got last time and compare to what Orkin's saying this time and make a decision, perhaps. You see what I'm saying?
Well, I mean, I'd be comfortable making a decision among the three bids we got last time or going out to bid. Do you have any idea what those three were offhand?
Offhand.
I do recall that Orkin was significantly higher.
They were, they are higher.
However, sometimes you get what you pay for, so.
Right.
Yeah, pellet guns aren't cutting out.
Maybe the thing to do is, couldn't you have three bids by next meeting? Then maybe the thing to do is ask them to.
Sure. No problem.
Okay. Can you do that, Mike?
Okay, Zach?
That's fine.
We'll see what you.
Yep.
That's good.
Joe?
Okay.
Excellent.
Okay, move on, Mike.
The last thing under number six was community projects. I just don't know, for full transparency, I don't know what the board has been briefed on or know about the community thought, or community events on the 7th of December that's planned right now. I tried to give you as much information as I could there, but is there anything that you would like to happen before that event happens? You want someone formally coming before you and briefing the event and the schedule? That's why I asked Chief about the traffic control plan because probably more than anything, that's going to be the issue because Route 4A would be blocked at this parade, and then you're going to have a lot of pedestrians walking around, you know, before and after because there's supposedly a tree lighting ceremony at the library, the holiday market going on in the Old Texaco Station, and then the parade itself, and vendors open for business as well. So I don't see, how you want, that's why I said, how do you want to proceed with this? Do you want someone to, like Nancy Trudeau's doing the parade, my wife's doing the market, and the library is doing the tree lighting ceremony.
You foresee any financial obligations here?
No. Well, REC, REC is using some of their money for the, under the special event stuff, but as far as anything beyond that, no.
I'm fine.
I'm fine.
Okay, is that it, Mike?
Yeah, thank you.
Warrants for approval.
Select Board comments?
Oh.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, sorry.
Wouldn't have jumped that.
Jumped right by that, Joe.
Sorry.
That's okay.
I just, I was reminded by the minutes that Ms. Schreiber asked the Select Board to consider a public meeting at 6:30 prior to the regularly scheduled meeting in two weeks as one would be needed for the scoping study application process. Is that still necessary?
It is necessary, and we're kind of stalled out right now on getting some answers on this previous or prior grants that we had for sidewalks. So I talked to Susan a couple days ago, and she's fine now. She was getting antsy, but.
Yeah, I guess my comment was, I wouldn't want our failure to hold the meeting to slow up the process. That's it for me. Okay, Dick?
Zach?
I'm good. Now move on to warrants.
Make the motion, we approve warrant number 1028 for $72,014.54. Warrant number 1024 for $30,762.57. Warrant number 1017 for $5,237.89. Warrant number 1024P for $14,589.28. Warrant number 1017P for $13,875.36. And warrant number 1341 for $53,431.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Questions? Joe?
No.
Dick?
No.
Zach?
No.
I don't have any. Follow the favor?
Aye.
Make the motion to approve.
Go ahead. You don't by any chance have the originals there, do you, Zach?
I don't think so.
They're not in there?
I have them all. The guy in here.
What's this right here?
Yeah, but that's just this one.
Oh.
That's just.
Okay, what's that one? Oh, is that the truck?
That's the truck. Where did they go? Look in there, Dick.
They're usually not out in here.
Yeah.
Are they stamped?
I remember pulling them out.
They were in there when I brought the.
Yeah. They were, because I remember pulling them out, no.
But do you have them stamped original on them?
Are they in that stack of stuff you've already gone through?
I just went through that.
Well, I'm already in deep, but I'm still.
They're not in here.
They're not in here.
Unless I put this in here by mistake. Nope, don't see them. And they are here somewhere.
If people look in them, they got it.
I've got it, I wasn't.
Can we just make this original? I've got, I've got the copy here. Does it have to be a red stacked original?
Well, I think they're already, are they, are they stamped copy or over the signature line stamped copy on those, Jim? That's the only thing you're going to have to go.
Did yours say copy?
I thought that in the digital world, there were no originals anymore.
Right, there is no.
Only the stamp.
Only the stamped.
In here, not stamped.
I didn't think so. So there's no reason why.
I always pull those out first.
They couldn't be stamped.
Well, if they're not, then that's why I didn't use them.
Yeah, these don't have.
Just got to make sure you get them all.
Zach's got his one that he had to write in. You wrote that out already? You know, but it's saying that he's got the, Jim's got the original right there.
I guess. This is the original of that one.
So then you go behind it as your original. One.
This is the truck, Mike.
Okay.
Yeah. He's right, original.
Do you want to use these as originals?
Use that.
Okay, and then Melanie Konstantin.
Whatever, as long as these signatures are originals.
The what?
As long as your signatures are originals, they're original.
Okay.
Does one of us have a blue pen?
What we don't want is two of you signing, one said.
No, at least you'll be able to know for sure.
Is it okay just to write original?
I don't have a blue pen.
Okay.
All right, go on.
Okay, all right. Sorry for that whole evening.
Oh, then while you're doing that, I'll make a motion to approve warrant number 1023P for $682.97, and warrant number 1016P for $682.97.
Am I going to accuse myself of this?
Second.
Motion is second. Follow the favor of.
That one?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Is that the purchase order too?
There was one, but we did that one.
Oh, that was, yeah, that was.
You have another one here. You want to hand me that one? I'll do the sayings while you're doing the signing.
Just me first, or?
So I have another motion, Mr. Chairman. Make a motion to approve purchase order number 044051, the Dodge Dodge Chrysler for $2,019 Dodge Ram 5500 chassis for $53,431 and no cents.
Mr. Chairman, does that have the warranty listed on it?
It says extended warranty. Part of that $53,000 is the $5,400 for the warranty.
Have you?
Can I tell them, let me go ahead and speak, Jim?
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
I'm just looking for clarification. Are you, are you approving the purchase order or the warrant to make payments?
Approving both. The warrant was already done with the warrants.
Oh, the, that one?
Yeah. That was a warrant?
It wasn't on that list.
So has that been seconded?
No.
Second to that motion on the Dodge Ram?
Second.
The motion is second?
We just went over that, though. That was the one.
We approved the warrant.
The purchase you approved back in March.
Want to get that, Zach? Then I'll go with Dick.
Do we need to vote on that?
I think we probably should.
I think we already did.
Decisive alone, Mike? I just seconded, we didn't.
Is it that one you first, wasn't that the fifth one or sixth?
That was the one, yes.
I didn't have that one. That's the one you wrote in, correct, on your list?
Correct.
So we have approved that one.
Right.
And now we're going to approve the purchase order. This is the purchase order.
Which we just seconded and couldn't even vote on.
We should now vote on it. I'll vote in favor of approving the purchase order. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? On hands, okay. I'll do the same thing on that, Mike. Tell us how much the actual cost of the vehicle and what the interest will be.
Don't you already ask me to do that?
It's the same vehicle, Jim.
Oh, is it? Okay. Well, we were buying so many, I was having a difficult time keeping up.
I'll go with that one, Joe. Pretty card.
Didn't want to sign this one, Joe?
I, I've only been given two.
Oh.
I don't think Joe really goes for all three.
They're all stapled together.
Oh, yeah, so I've been given seven, maybe eight.
Which you were going to pair up to.
Yeah, he missed third or fourth in here.
At least, I think more actually.
Potentially six. No, seven, potentially seven. The total would be nine.
There's nine? Nine, I have a sign. I got eight.
You should have eight plus that one. Should be a total of nine.
One, two, three. Four. Five, six. Seven? I got a total of eight included in that one.
Well, good, but we got to figure out which one's missing.
I think I need to sign some of this.
Got some housekeeping to do here, Joe. Joe, as you're signing these, will you read off the warrant numbers, and I'll check them off the list? And we'll see if we have one missing and sell which one to.
Oh, I've got a total of eight right here.
1028.
You're correct. I can't count. Never mind, Joe. We have them all. I can't count. Yeah.
One, two.
Join the group.
Five plus two is seven, not eight.
Right.
Can you figure the?
I can't. We got it?
We got it.
I'm obviously not qualified to do that, at least not tonight.
Okay, any recap while Joe's tallying up here?
Not for me, thank you.
Not for you? Dick? What's that? Zach?
I'm good.
Okay, so am I.
So I mean, interest rates, information on the truck, just check on the statute for the animal control ordinance for the fines.
Yep.
And then you got language change for the animal control area to include the hillside cemetery. I'm going to get Orkin to visit the transfer station to give me kind of a, I'll visit him with him just to kind of see what they, what they think going forward, and get three bids for the next meeting for somebody to exterminate the pests up there.
Okay. Here you go, Melanie.
We'll do anything.
Make the adjustments. Sure. I'm sorry, hang on.
Jim, will you entertain the motion to go into executive session?
Yes, we will. We'll entertain it right now.
Make the motion to go into executive session for labor relations and contracts with the board, the town manager, and Joe Bruno.
Second.
Okay, second. Any discussion? I'll vote in favor.
Aye.